Welcome everyone. The paper has noted that there have been no apologies, but I probably should put an apology in for Grant McKing to the Chief Financial Officer who is currently overseas on council with regard to insurance. So Marie will be sitting in his chair. Move to the confirmation of the agenda. Can I move that confirmation of the agenda please? I have a second for that. Thank you, Council Staines, those in favour, against, carried. Usual declaration of interest reminder. And the next paper, John is here, John is here, good. John, would you like to join us for this please? The brief explanation of something intangible, which was a combined between John and Grant with some physical questions from myself along the way. And could I just by way of reminder, this arose as a matter for the Chair's consideration for the agenda at our last meeting, but quite apart from that, it's an area that I certainly have been aware that there is considerable, in my view, misunderstanding out there in the public domain around this area in particular, and that I think it's timely to have this paper. So John, I'm not sure if you want to add anything specifically what's written, but I'm sure there will be questions.
I think I'll just take questions. I've quite rightly in such a way that it's simple. It's much more difficult to understand if it's simple, but I'll try to cover the risks, which are the same as if you have fixed rate note. I think probably the best way is just to take questions.
All right, well we'll throw it out for questions. Council Vendis.
Thank you very much for this, and I very much appreciate the clarity of the report. Couple of questions on 4.1, you talk about interest rate of say 5%. Would 5%, are we doing any new swaps and would that be roughly the area that they would be done in if we were doing it?
No, that's just an example, just to set out this to illustrate the point.
Okay, so are we doing a lot of new swaps or?
No, well we don't need to because a few years ago, when the council had a much higher debt profile going forward, quite a few swaps were in place and we don't need any more at the moment.
Okay, most of the swaps that have been in place then traditionally would have been roughly about 7%ish?
Well, it's on page 2, right there. It's got the more listed down there, fixed rate file on the right hand side.
Okay. So one of the issues that for instance on farmers have had with interest rate swaps is that if they wanted to get out of any of these agreements, they have had extraordinary fees to get out. Do we have any risk of being in a similar situation if we want to get out?
Absolutely. In the accounts, financial statements, if some of the financial statements have been added into the council, currently the cost to get out of the swaps for the whole family, I can't tell you what this would be for DCC, but for the whole family it's about net 14 million.
Right. But even that's not that bad if you consider the interest rate reduction that has happened and what it actually cost us to keep some of those swaps, I think.
Yes, absolutely. That cost to get out of all this is the difference between if you took a swap out today for the same period, for the same amount and what the contracted rate is, that's how the valuation works.
So it's not an injury to pay the fees for charging that would be an issue?
No, no.
John, could I just pick up just before going, I know I've got a list, but just following up on that. The issues with farmers, one of those issues might have been a farmer who decided to sell his farm and wished to go and discharge a large loan, but the proceeds of sale of that farm and discovering that he now has as a result of that swap, a significant penalty to pay. So the risk around the penalty, I'm using that in inverted commas, is if one were to need to get out of that. Now, short of winning an extraordinarily large powerful lotto payout, we are not in a situation where we would want to extricate ourselves from those swaps.
No. They've been put on there and they're still, they're a bit higher than the current market rates, but they come again every other day as it refers to a particular long term price that we're speaking. So anyway, I shall come back.
Council Wilson.
The only thing I got hooked up on this, and I know it's pretty small in semantics, but you've got this swap transaction with BK/BM, why is it BK?
BK/BM is the interbank rate that swaps are set up.
Okay, so that's it.
Floating rate is set up. It's a rate that's quoted every day.
Okay. That's where I got slightly confused with that. I thought reference is the floating rate, but I couldn't understand what it meant.
Well, BK/BM is a rate that's set at 10:30 every morning and it's the, all the banks that are quoted in the market, that's the top and bottom of the areas of the rest. That's the index rate.
Council Hawke.
Through the Chair, what are, and it doesn't seem particularly addressed in this report, but what are the arguments against taking this approach?
Arguments against it, but no, you can't protect the rates going forward. That's the major one. So therefore you don't want your cash flow requirements to go beyond the goal.
And that's it, as you said?
That's the major one, yes.
Council.
Yeah.
I've got a sort of double fault question. One thing I'd say, part of the problem with what you referred to, Mr Chair, about farmers' situation, that was a situation where they'd bought into a swap and they didn't like the way the swap was going. It wasn't because they had to pay the fees.
I understand that, and they also didn't understand it.
But I think what I'm just struggling to understand a wee bit is, how do these differ from just fixing the interest rate? I mean, I took a loan a while ago, I fixed it at 6.7 or something, I think it's been every single day until now it's been below that, I would have had a better floating rate. But I figure that is my risk and I'm just taking a risk. So is this about borrowing money for wind loans over you? Is this booking account in this swap?
Supposedly the simplest way to explain it is that you could have your fixed rate up until next year, end of next year, and then from next year on you're exposed. And what you can do with a derivative for a swap, you can put a swap in place for next year for the five years, and then you borrow a floating rate on the next year, but to protect it with your derivative going forward. So maximise what, and you don't want your cash flows over the five years.
Council New.
Thanks, Mr Chair, just following Council Wilson's question. Would there be any local authority that doesn't follow this path of actually establishing an interest rate risk management regime by the way of having interest rate swaps?
Some small ones probably do, or enterprise dues do. Wellington, I'm not quite sure about.
The reason why I ask a question because of our long term planning regimes that were required by statute to have in place. I think that this regime helps to minimise the risk fluctuation of loss.
Thank you. John, could I just ask another question? One, you alluded in your early on that because council's projected forward debt profile was in fact much higher than we are actually now travelling at, then some of the swaps that might have been put in place a few years ago were predicated on council needing a much higher level of indebtedness than in fact it's currently needing. And that's meant that the gap between our hedged and unhedged sums has got quite small. Does that create any particular concerns for you over the next few years, or do you think that's still a manageable position?
It's still a manageable position, it just means it's right at the top of the range and you've just got to make sure that as debt comes down, and debt is coming down over the next few years, those surplus funds will drop off. And hopefully that by the time if you wanted to close, somebody swaps out, inflation is much higher and you won't have a loss to pose them out of.
Right. So that if we did repay debt even faster than planned and found ourselves in a situation where we had surplus funds but hedged loans, the fact, I think somewhere in this report, in the financial report, if you look at the balance sheet, the difference between the liabilities on hedging from a year ago to now, it's already substantially less than it was a year ago, and that's probably for a range of factors, but. So the suggestion is that as the long term interest rates go up, then that gap will progressively reduce?
Yeah, it reduces because, for two reasons, one is because of the change, and also the term.
Any other questions?
My line's just about communicating this information to the public, and I appreciate that this is a public report and it's obviously going to be on our website in that capacity, but I wonder whether or not there's intentions to make it accessible in another form, so that I don't have to remember what date the meeting was that this information came to.
What a good idea. I'm not quite sure exactly how one does it. What I would say is that part of the reason that I was keen when Council Vendis raised this matter to get it on quickly is that when Council Calvert and I did the public finance briefing some months ago, it was very clear to me that this was a major concern to some people and also majorly misunderstood. And I think in part because so much of what happens in the markets around hedging is speculative. And the suggestion, I think in some people's minds, is that what we are doing is speculative and that we are incurring losses as a result of that speculation. Well, that's not true. So certainly it would be helpful, it would be my intention to have another one of those meetings shortly after the annual plans confirmed, because we will be in a position then to say, well, this is our position for the next year, and I think this would undoubtedly form a part of that then. But if somebody has another suggestion as to how we actually propagate that information earlier than that, I'm very happy to hear it.
Mr Chair, I would say that one thing I'd argue with you is that you're not making losses, you're just paying higher interest rates than you would if you actually took the decision there.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is that in the minds of many of the people in the public at that meeting, they made an assumption that what is showing in our balance sheet is, I forget just the exact name for it, was an actual loss that we were incurring, and that as you say, that's not the case. What is actually being shown in the balance sheet is the difference between what we might have been paying as a interest rate if we'd left everything floating and no idea of what was going to happen versus the situation that we have taken to give ourselves send. All right, thank you. I don't think we actually have a recommendation, but.
I've got one.
Sorry.
I've got one, I've got. That's a committee note, the memorandum explaining the derivatives and risks to the neighbours we have to, I think, that's what it says.
Thank you, I'll take it for that. Council Staines, is there any further discussion? Council P.
Yeah, sorry, John. Just, yeah, to get my head around this, I need to do some thinking about it. But I mean, you do refer to gains and losses, and is it possible to quantify that?
We reevaluate our instruments every month, every month, I already do it, all the instruments we've got across the whole family, and we can see what movements there are. And all that valuation is a difference between what these rates are contracted for on page 2 of the report, and what the same rate would be if you took the same swap out now for the terms left on the swap. So that's how we evaluate.
So are we over a long period to say, well, we've gained, we've lost, or is it actually not that simple?
Well, it's not that simple really, because you either have certainty of interest costs or you don't, and this is the cost of having certainty at the moment. But there have been times, not seven years ago, when it was round the other way. By having certainty, we're paying less than if we were on floating rate.
But just in case there's any confusion here, regardless of whether it's showing in the balance sheet as a profit or a loss, no money has either left the building or come into the building. It's, it would only be if we were to go out and wish to extricate ourselves from those loans. Somebody extraordinarily wealthy dies and leaves us a lot of money, which in this case, frankly, we won't care. Or that loan would become realised, sorry, that liability would become realised, or alternatively, as it has been in the past and might again be in the future, that profit would be realised.
Yeah, just one last comment there, and you referenced it, Mr Chair, and I was at that meeting where you and Council Calvert explained things, and you arrived, there was some unease about what this meant. And so anything we can do to further explain it, and you said another meeting, that would be good.
Council Calvert.
If we look in response to people's questions and to that meeting and anyone that followed through, was putting on a website and generally when people find our information about finances, a list of these sort of frequently asked questions or things that are asked, so they're not connected to any particular meeting, they're connected to, if you're going ferreting around looking at the finances, then you'll find these things. I think that would be useful. And also while we're doing a couple, a pair of words that got through the, people don't know what they mean sort of radar thing, I think we'll close out, I think if we're going to put them on a website, perhaps close out, it's not a very useful pair of words at the moment.
I'm not 100% certain, but I think that this is one of the ones that did go onto the website after the public meeting, but we'll check that. All right, is there any further discussion? If not, of the recommendations, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Thanks, John. Move to the financial report and we're in. Thank you.
So excluding the liquidity fund result, the council position showed an operating deficit of 1.534 million, which is 2.275 million better than budgeted. And if you refer to page 512, it explains the main drivers of that result. So external revenue is, there's the budget across a number of departments, the subsidy incomes from transportation operations is unfavourable, and we've got an explanation for that further on, and it's relating to the timing of the work. Depreciation is favourable, there's due to evaluations of significant assets, and also the timing of major projects. The loan interest, 1.995 million favourable, and again, that's because no new loans have been drawn down. And in the operating area, some asset operations and maintenance costs are low budget for a variety of reasons. There's a couple of things I should just point out in here. Council Wiley raised a question with one of my staff about some information that's contained on page 5.3. So if you have a look at the personnel costs in the month variance, it shows personnel costs of 720 favorable, and it's showing elected members' costs of 714 unfavorable. So that's page 5.3. The reason for that is that elected members' costs in the annual plan are shown as an operational cost, but up until this last month, they were shown in personnel costs in our monthly reports. And so we're keeping very close eye on our personnel costs, and we had to keep reporting the variance on that every month to clarify this, so we've taken it out of personnel costs and put it under operational costs where it belongs. Now, that is for community boards as well as councillors' remuneration, it's just remuneration costs, it's not other costs, so hopefully that's clear. Also on page 5.11, you'll see that there's quite an increase in the accounts receivable money owing for two to four months. In the past, we've reported on the report that came to finance, just for the accounts receivable money that finance looked after, but there are other pockets of debt in the organisation. And so this month, we've reported on all accounts receivable outstanding for two to four months, hence the reason for the increase. It gives much more clarity. We've only adjusted it for February and for the corresponding period last year, but we'll keep it on that same report in cycle for the months going forward, so in time we'll get caught up. Are there any questions?
Mr Staines.
Great report, I think the extra explanations are fantastic. I was just wondering whether it might be possible, where there is a variance, to have noted. So for instance, take on 5.15, this general administration expense is at the top of the page, payable variance, $414,000. Whether we might be able to say, of that $414,000, it's all timing, or there's, you know, $100,000 of it which is permanent, favorable, and the rest is timing, or so that we actually, in a way, we're starting to see where unfavorable versus favorable are having an impact.
Yeah, we can take that suggestion on board. You'll see that every month we're doing a slight variation on the reporting, with a view to trying to refine it to give everybody what they want. And reporting on these scout lines is what we used to do, but it was very fragmented and we went away from it, and then we went to the departmental comments. Now we're trying to get a Malcolm of the two, and this month we've had a lot of time, so we will work to do that for the next time, because the timing issue is quite significant.
Certainly the report is a big improvement, so congratulations.
Thank you, and we'll try and put some more graphs and broke up some of the print, so we'll add a little bit more interest in the future as well.
And in regard to, we've raised with staff and it's being worked on, in things like the balance sheet and that, we've got a comparison within the year budget, which is not heavily useful, that will be hopefully rectified for the next year.
And cash flow also.
Council Vendis.
I want to echo Council Staines, thanks for having some nice clear information, and I particularly like the pictures. You can always, much more than ever, the pictures and the tables. I just did wonder though, normal business practice is to look at six months or at least quarters, why have we got eight months here? Isn't that creating quite a lot of difficulty in terms of comparison?
Because it's more accurate than six months.
It's where at the bell with the council timetable, so this is the closest report that we've done to the council meeting timetable, so this is just the way.
It's just a way of getting it the most up to date.
Yeah, it is.
All this particular measure. Okay. So in terms of comparing with other previous financial reports, are you going to basically just do a month up to date, or are you going to try and do?
Or do the closest month to the meeting date.
Thank you. Council Hawke.
Through the Chair, I understand that it's most likely the percentage of variance is more, can be more significant than the raw data, but under asset operations and maintenance, we were 1.47 million favorable. Oh, sorry, page 5.3, Statement of Financial Performance, 1.472 million favorable. Is that a significant variance?
Okay, you see on page 5.14, there's an explanation on that. So what we're saying is that this has been savings in a number of areas, including transportation operations, water and waste services and property. Some of those are timing issues around maintenance and reinstatement of expenditures, so probably transportation operations have been a bit contributing to that. The favorable results have been partially offset by one or two small unfavorable variances, but it will be timing that we take those up to budget closer to the end of the financial year.
Right, so you, so that all, that you understand that it won't be a significant variance by the end of the year?
No, probably not. It will depend on if we get all the projects finished or not, and if we've already signaled that some be carried forwards with some of those capital projects, that will have a bit of a.
The decrease in revenue from Wainapool and Gym, is that part of a broader trend of decreasing revenue?
From that facility. I think it would be true to say that that trend has been over the last couple of years, and what we're looking to see is during the budgets for 2015, just to make sure that the revenue targets in those are realistic for what we can expect to achieve.
Is it considered that the current capacity constraints are contributing to that trend?
I would have to check that, if that is the complete answer, I'm not certain.
And just to follow up on this, and I don't know how relevant this is to this conversation, but that review that has been put forward through the draft annual plan, will that consider? And I think back to comments made by the outgoing manager of this facility during our draft annual plan here, is where the space for, the private provision of gymnasiums, for example, has grown exponentially during the lifetime of the facility at Wainapool. Will that capacity issue, will that capacity review consider the ongoing possibility of running a gym at Wainapool?
I wasn't aware that it was going to be covered, so I'll double check that.
As I can suggest, the budget position has been reviewed for 2015. Historically, aquatic services hasn't met its budget over time, so we're looking to review that for 2015. In terms of the gym, the information that's provided, I think last time was that the costs, there are no rates subsidy that goes into the gym, but the budget revenue for the gym has been overstated. So for 2015 year, we are looking to try and get the budget more in line with the actuals and understand that. The gym pays the same way, there's no rate subsidy that goes into that. It is true that there's a lot more competition in the market though, so we're just going to try and make sure that the budget going forward is realistic.
Thank you. Council McDevish.
Mine just relates to 5.15, well, mentioned on a number of pages, but the outline is on 5.15, other capital expenditure. Through the Chair, at local government New Zealand, zone 5 and 6, on Tuesday and Friday, it was highlighted that for NZTA, the tendency of TLAs to underspend on capital and constantly roll over in the transportation ops area is causing them headaches, and causing the sector headaches in terms of trying to convince central government that we do have a funding issue, that we don't have enough money for the maintenance that we need to be doing. To that end, has there been any thought or focus lately or recently? I know that we have got a lot of signal carryforwards in the transops area, and I just wondered whether or not there is any focus on how we might reduce that in the future.
Through the Chair, yes, there has been a constant issue for us and other local authorities over time around their ability to spend on capital expenditure. Of the list that's on 5.15, the financial rating is the biggest chunk, and it's been tied up with conceding issues. We've had discussions with NZTA about our intention to spend. The remaining, which is renewals and stuff, we're trying to get, I suppose, better at programming that work in. There's been a lot of work done recently around that. I think in the last year we've been caught by the storm events, which have distracted some of our key staff from getting that work underway. We're in constant discussion with NZTA about that, and we keep getting the same message from NZTA, they have money to spend and are disappointed when we don't spend it. So we are working our hearts to try and make sure we do spend it. There's still work to be done around that though.
Is it a case of added governance, that we're us having expectations when we're setting long term plans and annual plans that are over and above the ability of our staff to deliver on those?
Through the Chair, I don't believe so. It is a management resource issue on our side, and typically, there's a whole lot of reasons why the money doesn't get spent. Typically, we aren't given enough time pre the work commencing to do things like reasons and sense consultation, tender documentation, those sorts of things. More recently, we've. More recently, we've moved to a, what we've called direct contractor engagement model, which has improved our delivery of the work over time and it's something that we're constantly looking at. If you take those, that spend though against the total spend in the transportation area of something like just over $20 million, on a comparative scale, there are big numbers here, but also spending a lot of money out of the network around that. So it's a reasonable seeing management issue from our point of view about how we make sure that we spend, like, more importantly, that how we spend it wisely. We don't want to get into a situation where as we get closer to the end of the financial year, there's a sudden desire of rushing spend money that's not well spent. So we make sure that we have good systems and processes in place and ELT annually, and it comes to council, consider the rollovers and for areas like renewals, where there's an ongoing budget line, we don't tend to approve the carry forward unless we're satisfied that there is sufficient capacity to do the next year's work, which then comes on top of that.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, I've, I have no desire for us to be spending money in a way that isn't sensible and considered, but I guess I just wanted to check in and make sure that our expectations at the governance level weren't completely mismatched with capacity to deal with that on the ground, so, especially as we head into finalizing annual plan. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Horvitz?
Through the chair, a question with regards to City Property, 521, where it says investment portfolio, external revenue was unfavorable, 243K, due to current economic conditions that have impacted on rentals achieved on rental reviews and lease renewals. Are those unfavorable economic conditions specific to the rental sector or is it something that we should be concerned about also with regards to the value of properties that we own? Should they be sold?
That's got no real significance to the value of the properties. I suppose it does at City Field Capital, it's a couple of million dollars. You need to look at it in, in context. The investment portfolio has a gross revenue of about $9.2 million, so, so this is about 2.6% of, of, of that, which is well within, you know, reasonable levels of when you're talking about managing property and budgeting correctly. In terms of the whole property portfolio, you know, you've got a gross revenue of over $30 million and so 243,000 is relatively minor. In terms of, well, that's, yeah, I think that answers the question.
So any, any projects that were?
I don't think you need to have to treat on eggshells here. I understand the question as close to me earlier, I think you're reasonably safe. You were, I just sensed that you were trying to.
Be more diplomatic, Counselor Vandebis. The, the proposed Wall Street development was put forward, the, the method of backholding that was the sale of City Property. And we shouldn't be concerned about those values or estimates presented to us?
I don't think you should be. We've also got a extra number in there since, in fact, we've been out to tender, the tenders have come in $600,000 under what we budgeted on, so we have a fairly big space there too. So that's improving the position. And the full valuations that we have done at the request of council have come in several million dollars higher as well.
Thanks.
No further questions? Happy to move, thank you. I have a second please. Counselor McTavish? Any further discussion? There being now, I'll put the recommendation in favour, against Kerry. Thank you. That's the last item, part notification of agenda items for consideration by the chair, while this is the last open session I have. Do I have any, will speak now or whatever, you know, actually, right, there are none. I'll now move, we move out of topic session for the reasons identified in the motion. I have a second please. Counselor McTavish?